All right, it is Monday, September 23rd, 2024. This is the committee of the whole, start of the budget sessions. It is six o'clock and we are in City Hall council chambers. Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Here.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Firminick?
Here.
Mr. Lass?
Here.
Mr. Rick? Mike, you on the line? Mr. Weix?
Here.
Ms. Rukowski?
Here.
Mayor Haas?
Here.
Eight out of nine right now.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Any public comment? Second call for public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on to general agenda items for consideration. Since we have a wide array here from the airport, I think if the council's okay, we'll move them up to the front for their capital project. You guys want to take the podium for your capital project?
My name is Gary Schwartz and I'm the chair of your commission at the airport. We have a project we would like to do for the maintenance hangar. And I have a number of people that would like to present to you tonight. You know, you've seen the proposed cost of the project. It's possible, these prices were set by consultants based on what they saw in the market. It's possible that if we bid this in January, as we would like to, that it could be a little bit less than that as contractors try to lock in projects for the year. When you go out and you try to bid stuff in July and August, your contractors are going to raise the prices. And if they get it, they get it; if they don't, they don't. Little background, since 2002, the Merrill Airport has received approximately $15 million from the FAA through the Bureau of Aeronautics, who is a block, Wisconsin's a block grant state. And it's kind of unique, there aren't too many that are. What it means is that the FAA works with a budget with Bureau of Aeronautics and then says, "Go do it the way we do it," basically. In other states, they're constantly in every project. So, Wisconsin has a little bit of advantage there. Since, so, since 2002, the $15 million of the projects cost the city of Merrill about $400,000. A project back then, in those years, up until about 2010 maybe, were at a 2.5% match. So if you did a million dollar project, it cost the city $25,000. Now sometime after that, they changed it to 5%, so a million dollar project would cost the city $50,000. As far as development and growth for the city and economic impact, there isn't any place you can go to get a deal like that. In this case, a $2.6 million hangar, you know, might cost the city $260,000. So we have a number of people here tonight. Rich McCullough is going to talk just a little bit about maintenance and the need for it in the area and the lack of it in the area. Evan Krieger is our assigned engineer from BOA. Carl Kemper is CEO of Becker-Hoppe. And Mark Brezhnevich over here is the finance guy in BOA. And we have commission members here also. Joe Malzak and Larry Winning is almost at every, every commission meeting and he's with us tonight also. So I'm going to ask Carl to start off talking to you a little bit about the finances and I may have a couple of comments as we close, but thank you for allowing us to present this project to you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having us here tonight. Gary, you had mentioned that you wanted Rich to talk a little bit about the, you know, his maintenance operation, the need for maintenance. Do you still want me to go first with the, with the dollars and cents, or do you want Rich to talk?
Maybe it makes sense to have Rich step up.
Yep, yep. Why don't you give them kind of an intro, Rich?
Ladies and gentlemen, Rich McCullough, Airport Manager. I also own and operate the aircraft maintenance facility here in Merrill. When I first took over in 2015, I didn't think I'd make much of a go at it because of all the other shops that were going. Typically, when you have aircraft maintenance, owners tend to stay with a mechanic because it's trust issue. It's not like taking your car down to the local shop and letting anybody pretty much touch it. It's been the exact opposite. I've actually grown and done extremely well, mainly because we've lost so many shops. Just since 2020 alone, we've lost almost a dozen, dozen shops in central Wisconsin. So it's come down to the point where they pretty much don't have anywhere else to go. I just found out last week that Wisconsin Rapids, they just shut their doors. Tomahawk doesn't have a shop, Antigo doesn't have a shop. Wausau has part-time. I've been taking care of CWA since January of 2023. So they don't have a mechanic. American Airlines is starting to come back to CWA on October 6th. So I've just renewed my contract with Piedmont Airlines. And it's because I'm at that or find somebody in Green Bay. So we've grown quite a bit, we've outgrown the shop. I juggle a lot of aircraft and because I can't get them all to Merrill, because I have nowhere to put them, we've been doing a lot of traveling. I go, I do a lot of inspections throughout the U.S. I've gone to Canada, I'm looking at another one in Canada for somebody. So it's not just here in Merrill. You know, we're, we're working on aircraft all over the state and we outreach to other states because of the work we do do. So that's where I'm at. It's, the need is there, it's growing. We don't have any other mechanics coming into the, into the area. So a lot of these older shops that have older gentlemen running it, they're retiring and nobody's filling their shoes. I do have some younger guys working for me. I did enroll in the youth apprenticeship program and I do have a young lady that's working with me now under that program. Unfortunately, she's traveling, traveling from Antigo. She goes to Wittenburg High School, but she comes here to Merrill five days a week because, and I asked her, "Why, why here?" She says, "You're the only one that responded, no one else responded." So there is a growing need here in the city of Merrill for aircraft maintenance. And I'm outgrowing the shop. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
Okay, so like Gary mentioned, my name's Carl Kemper. I'm with Becker-Hoppe Associates. We're an engineering firm out of Wausau. I specialize in airport engineering, so have done a few of these hangar projects over the years and a lot of other projects at the Merrill Airport. So, you know, I guess I don't know how detailed you'd like me to get. I'm happy to take any questions at any time that anybody has. You know, Gary kind of gave a brief summary overview of the, of the overall project cost for this hangar. It would be a 100-foot by 100-foot hangar. That could put, you'd be able to put quite a few aircraft in it for Rich to be able to do his maintenance work on them. Right now, Rich is working out of a city-owned hangar at the airport. It's a 60-foot by 60-foot. And I'm a pilot, I've had my airplane in there getting worked on by Rich before. And it's extremely tight. Sometimes it's like a jungle gym trying to climb around all the planes while Rich is working in there. So I don't know how you do it in that little hangar, Rich. So anyway, again, I'm here to really help answer any questions on funding that anybody might have. Again, I think Gary summed it up well, that you get the project for 10 cents on the dollar if you had all the capital upfront to pay for the project. Now I see, working with Rod and Emily, you know, the city is looking at probably taking out a TID loan if you wanted to pursue this. So there would be some interest payments that would go along with that. And based on the funding schedule that, that we're anticipating, that you'd be able to fully pay off that TID loan with the reimbursements from the FAA, up to the 90% that FAA will get you, you would have about $230,000 in interest payments for that TID loan. So takes a project that should be only 10% funded by the city and brings it up to about 20% funding by the city if you take those interest payments into account. There is this, this spreadsheet that's part of your packet here. I'd be happy to get into any of the details on that. I think it's probably maybe a little bit information overload. But really, just to keep it high level again, right now, there is estimated to be about 1.6 million, that's line 20, if you're looking at that spreadsheet. Line 20, there's estimated to be about 1.6 million in project funding available right now for the hangar. And then the rest of the project funding would come through reimbursements that you see in lines 25 through line 38 or 39 there. So the FAA has a program out there where every year, the Merrill Airport has $150,000 with your name on it that FAA hands over to the city. You know, I'm simplifying things, but hands it through the state BOA, which is who I have him mark work for. And they say, "Hey, city of Merrill, what would you like to use this $150,000 for at your airport?" And we have it programmed right now or planned where in many of those years coming up, that $150,000 would go towards reimbursing you for that TID loan.
Can you, is there a guarantee that, that you can use it for that?
Good question, Mayor. So you can see in lines 27, 28, and 29, we actually say that we don't anticipate that the city would take those entitlement funds those years because there's another project at the airport with priority that would be better not to use those funds. And really, there are, well, I'll keep it simple there. There's another project at the airport that has priority where we don't want to use those funds during those years. But then you can see, starting again in 2029 is when we anticipate those reimbursements would start again.
And is the entitlement money, it's kind of a guarantee, but it's not really a guarantee? Is that kind of?
Yeah, Mark and I were just looking at that at the start of the meeting. So this, this FAA program has been in place in some shape or form since the mid-'40s. It's gone through some different names over the years. Since the 2000s is when it's been $150,000 every year and it hasn't changed since, I think it was like 2002 or 2004, Mark, is when that's been in place. And it hasn't changed. There was just a law renewed through Congress that's called the FAA reauthorization, renewed through the federal government, that extended this program through 2028. So it's extended through 2028. None of us in the industry have seen any indicators that would suggest that they plan to stop it after 2028. They typically, every five years, the FAA reauthorization goes through Congress and, and that funding source gets renewed. So you can see at the bottom of that spreadsheet, just a high-level summary of the project funding, total estimated federal project funding, about 2.4 million that you would receive from FAA for this hangar. About $257,000 that the city of Merrill would, that would be their 5% to 10% match on that federal funding. It varies from year to year, as Gary was suggesting, between 5% and 10%. And then you see line 47, total estimated TID loan interest. That's if you, you took that loan out all the way through 2033. You know, there, there could be some factors that would help you pay off that TID loan more quickly and not have to have as much interest. I mean, you look at $242,000 worth of interest if you take that loan through 2033, that's nothing to bat an eyelash at. So trying to find ways to pay that loan down faster and not have as much interest would obviously be a big benefit. Some ways to do that, right now, the hangar that Rich is, is working out of is a city-owned hangar. So you could sell that hangar and use that to help pay off the loan. Also, Mark is going to be looking for ways to maybe get other airports FAA entitlement funding who maybe don't have projects going on and take those from those other airports and give them to Merrill so that you could reimburse yourself sooner. So this, you know, we hope is a worst-case scenario.
I have two questions for you. I don't know if you have the answers or someone else, but what is the next closest airport that has the maintenance facilities? And the second question, you said it's a 100-by-100 building. Is it just basically a, a building or is there specialized equipment that is included in this cost? Or is that something that has to be added in after the fact?
So it's a 100-by-100 building with a bathroom in it and an office space planned for two people to sit comfortably. So Rich would have his desk in the office and then he mentioned that he has a, an assistant or an office manager working there with him. So that would be, the intent would be to have them to be able to have that office space. The rest is open hangar. Other than that, it's, it's pretty, you know, bare bones in terms of amenities, no other equipment. Rich has his equipment in the other hangar that he would be moving over into this hangar. One, I don't know if it would be considered amenity, but one other feature of the hangar would be ventilation to allow for painting of aircraft parts and, and, you know, control surfaces, things like that. Someone would be able to, Rich would be able to put a paint booth in there and, and have a paint booth to paint and suck the fumes out.
Or anything like heavy-duty lifts or anything like that for?
We are looking at doing some of the kind of preliminary infrastructure for an overhead crane system, basically an overhead hoist. Float, float planes are common in the area and it would really be handy to be able to bring a float plane in there and get it under that hoist and lift it up to be able to change the floats out, put wheels on. I own a float plane and so that's what you do typically is in the winter, take the floats off and put the wheels on. That hoist would also be very handy for lifting engines in and out of the aircraft, to have engine overhauls done. So we're not including the crane itself, but some of the framing members on the hangar to be able to support a crane. Would a mechanic ever want to install a crane in there? It would be set up for that. One other feature of the hangar is the hangar door. A hangar door is, is essentially one, one side of the building, kind of envision the whole wall opens up to be able to get aircraft in and out. As part of the design and scoping for this project, we thought that it would be in the city's best interest to design the hangar with a hangar door that's large enough so that if the use of the, of the hangar were to ever change, or if larger aircraft, you know, would ever need to have some maintenance done on them, they'd be able to get them in. Most of the aircraft that Rich is working on are piston, single and twin aircraft, but the hangar door would be high enough to get some corporate jets in there, would there ever be that need. And that really is a, a smart choice that when you build a hangar that large, you want to be able to accommodate corporate jets should there ever be a need for that. So it really would be a versatile use opportunity for the city. And Joe was actually just telling me before the meeting, Joe's on the airport commission, was telling me before the meeting that he just had a call from somebody in North Carolina coming in to do business in Merrill next week and they're planning to fly in in a corporate jet and looking for somewhere to stay and car to use and things like that. So it's, and, and there's been another jet operating commonly out of the, out of the Merrill Airport recently. So it's definitely, your airport has, has a lot of potential. I think Shandra from Kaufman Associates, Kaufman Associates, details that out pretty well in her letter that's in the packet. I'd encourage you all to read that. It's, you know, the airport is, has a lot of potential to be a, to be an economic driver, not only for aircraft maintenance, but, you know, for many other opportunities in the city.
And again, did you say where was the next closest maintenance?
So Rich touched on, on some of them. I'm based in Wausau with my aircraft and we have a part-time mechanic down there and it's, he is actually the mechanic for Aspiris Medevac. And so that's his top priority and then small, personal planes are, are more, you know, he can, he gets to them when he can. So that's really hard when you own an airplane and you need maintenance done on it and you're just always playing second fiddle to somebody. So I don't know that I would really consider Wausau a real maintenance facility. Iron Mountain is, is one that, you know, actually has, has service. You get over in the Fox Valley and there's a few. It's pretty sparse, I'm just trying to think here. Rice Lake, yep. They, Rice Lake more specializes in turboprops and small jets. So not, you know, like, like Rich, like Rich mentioned, it's, these, these private aircraft, people need a mechanic for them and if they find a good mechanic, they're willing to fly in from out of state to have their aircraft work on, worked on. So when they come in, you know, they're buying fuel, buying hotel rooms, buying fuel, you know, paying Rich, which helps drive the local economy.
How old is the present hangar that we have right now? Maintenance hangar?
Yeah, I was thinking the 50s or 60s.
Okay. And my second question is, could that be divided into other hangars? We do have a waitlist, what's the waitlist at? 19 planes are waiting for a hangar. Could that be divided into three separate units or?
Dividing it probably wouldn't work because of, you know, how the hangar door is, is situated on the hangar. There are some neat ideas that I've seen. Up at Shell Lake, actually, they have a hangar up there who has, they have a, an aircraft carousel in their hangar. It's kind of like a merry-go-round for aircrafts, so you can push one in and then spin it and push another one in. And so when you need to get your plane out, you just spin it so that your plane is in front of the door and you pull it out. You know, I think the two opportunities that you would want to look at for your hangar that I would recommend, the one that Rich is in now, one would be to see if, see if you can sell it and, and get that capital back right away and again, use it towards paying off the loan. If you don't feel that the offer amount that you get for it is, is what it's worth, then you could always look at leasing it out. And you could still lease it out to, let's say, three aircraft. You just have to find a, a group of lessees who are willing to work with one another to get their planes in and out. You know, it'd be a situation where you might have to pull one plane out to get the other one out. And some people are okay with that.
I do have a question on selling the hangar. How, like, what would you, what would the value of a hangar be and how would you even get that out of there? Like, I don't, wouldn't it?
So to build a brand-new 60-by-60 hangar right now with bathrooms and office space would be in the range of around $400,000 to build a new one. Now, this one is obviously not new, we just touched on that. You know, just an off-the-cuff estimate, $100,000 to $200,000 potential for it. But it's, it really, it's just whatever the market will bear.
Any other questions for Carl?
I have a question for the airport manager. This is an awful big commitment from the city of Merrill and kind of centers around you. What's your commitment back to the city of Merrill? Can we ask that?
I mean, it's a fair question to ask.
Currently, I do five-year contracts, which is what's been the norm from the way I understand it. That's pretty common with all airports. I do end my contract December 2025, that'll be my second, so it'll be 10 years. And I do plan on renewing another five-year. So currently, at the moment, I am staying in Merrill. I, I was planning on leaving earlier last year, but decided to stay and have taken on more commitments with more employees, again, the youth apprenticeship program. So currently, I'm, I am staying. I'm not, we're not leaving, so. But yeah, I, as of right now, unless they change the contract on me to where it's not the current situation, I plan on staying, so. And again, I do pay the utilities on that building I pay rent on and that would continue, so.
Do you anticipate trying to grow that youth apprenticeship program?
I am. I am currently working with the city of Merrill, which is where, the, the high school in Merrill, I'm sorry, which is where we were hoping it was going to start. I wasn't planning on getting anybody else from any other city. It just happened to work that way. So I am still working with the Merrill High School and we are hoping to drum up some more youth apprenticeship students with that. And I have done this in the past, I have taken on other students outside of the youth apprenticeship. The state just started the aircraft maintenance program last year, so it's very new to the state under that youth apprenticeship program. I actually have taken on five others in the past since I've been here in the last 10 years. So this is the first time that it's official with the high school.
I do have one other thing to add that maybe as a question in, in some of your, some of your minds right now regarding privately-owned hangars versus publicly-owned hangars. The Merrill Airport property is city-owned property. However, a lot of that property has been purchased through grants given by the FAA. So the property, similarly to these other projects, has mostly been purchased at a 5% cost to the city, or even a 2.5% cost to the city. And while that's really great for the city, obviously, like Gary mentioned earlier, you're, you're buying it for pennies on the dollar, there are some strings attached to that when you take those federal dollars. And those strings are that when somebody wants to build a hangar on your airfield, on your airport, you are, you lease them the property for them to build their hangar on the airport. You don't, you don't sell them the property. You are prohibited from selling them the property for them to put their hangar on it. And that puts a lot of private individuals in a tough situation because they, if they want a private hangar, they're faced with having to build a hangar and they own the building, but they don't own the property that the building sits on. And really, at any point, the owner of that property can tell them, "Okay, we want this property for something else. You can pick up your hangar and move it if you want to and otherwise, if you don't want to move it out of here, we're going to take control of it." So it is a, a challenge to, especially for a hangar of this magnitude, to build privately for that reason. So really, it would be a, a great asset that the city would continue to own, obviously, after the project and a, again, a, a pretty valuable asset that the city would get for pennies on the dollar. Mark, did you want to chime in at all?
So my name is Mark Ruchekowski. I am the Airport Program Engineer for the Wisconsin Bureau of Aeronautics. And so what that means is I deal everything funding. So I'm not going to add a whole lot to what Carl said because Carl did a really good job summarizing the information that was in your packet. I think one thing, if anyone has any funding questions, but you know, a couple of the, the details behind the plan that was put together is that when an airport takes funds to build a hangar or do a fuel system, FAA requires revenue generating to be triggered. It's a, one of the rare projects is because FAA, I wouldn't say they don't want to build hangars, but when you want to build something that generates revenue, FAA wants to make sure your airfield is in good shape and all those kind of things. And Gary's done a great job over the years of making sure that is the case. The airport is actually in really good shape as far as payments and all that kind of stuff. So it's good timing to do a project like this. And that's actually why the three-year gap that, that Carl shows in here of '26, '27, and '28, you trigger revenue generating, it lasts for three fiscal years, including the year it's triggered, so fiscal '25, '26, '27. Then there is other projects that we want to do. I just wanted to add that in there. There is actually a very well-thought-out plan on how to, you know, work within the rules that are given to us by FAA to make this project happen and then also allow other things to happen while then having a return on that. And I guess the, the one thing Carl and I talked about too before the meeting started is that there is an existing project out there that we're going to see if we can get that closed because there'll be a few extra dollars that'll probably come back. You know, you do a construction project, they don't ever, you know, sometimes they go over budget. If you would, usually projects come in under budget, there could be some extra dollars there too that we can then take out of that project, apply to the hangar. It's not going to, you know, summarize millions of dollars, but every little bit that we can, you know, pull into this and, and make that work counts. Yeah, I guess, and to reiterate too, because I know that is certainly a question, you know, as Carl mentioned, the airport improvement program where most of this funding is going to come from is authorized by the federal government through 2028. And again, as he mentioned too, you know, AIP is, is the program itself has existed since 1982. So, you know, FAA does that on a regular cycle. So, you know, the chances of them not, you know, in '29 through '33, like shown on here, not having entitlements available would be, you know, changing policy that they've had for, you know, several decades. So no one anticipates that happening, but FAA does do that on a cycle. So there is nothing past '28 is, you know, 100% locked in stone, but history would say that has been the course of things the last 25 years. So I guess unless anybody has any specific funding questions, since that is my, my role at the state, I'll turn it back over to Gary.
I think one more piece of information that's important for you all to have at hand. And I'm not telling you this to try to pressure you into saying yes to this project. And I'm not telling you this to try to pressure you into saying yes to this project, but it really is a piece of information that I think is important that you know. If you look at the spreadsheet again, I don't want you to look at every detail of it, but if you look at some of the years, there's BIL funding slated for certain years. So like on line 10, BIL funding through fiscal year 2025, that's $600,000. And if you look at line 25, BIL funding in fiscal year 2026, that's $150,000. The BIL funding, bipartisan infrastructure law funding, is really a once-in-a-lifetime funding opportunity that's been made available to airports throughout the country. And Merrill has $150,000 worth of BIL funding with Merrill's name on it for the years 2022 to 2026. It's never been done before. We don't have any indication that this type of funding package would ever be put out again. The one unique thing about BIL funding is that it can be used towards hangars. Really, there aren't many other FAA funding sources out there that can be used towards hangars. So this, if this BIL funding were not out here right now and you didn't have this BIL opportunity in front of you, it would be $750,000 that you would not have to put towards this hangar project. And you will probably never have that $750,000 at hand all at once to put towards this hangar project again. This timeline, if we didn't have this BIL funding, this timeline would stretch out through 2040-something or later. So again, it's not to try to pressure you into saying yes, but it's to give you the information that this BIL funding is, as far as we can tell, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that is really special for projects like this where you can't get the other FAA funding sources for it.
One more question. You mentioned that there's another project. Is this something that's in the works? Is this something that's coming up? Is this something, I mean, you can elaborate on, or is this?
Great question. So your airport has two runways, probably has, give or take, about five taxiways. You have a city-owned T-hanger facility. You have a city-owned maintenance hangar that Rich is working out of. You have some motorized gates. You have parking lots. You have a terminal building. You have a fence. You have a lot of great infrastructure. Your airport is in great shape in terms of development. There's really not much new development needed at your airport. But with all of the existing facilities that you do have, there's always going to be upkeep needed. And so the project that we were specifically referring to, to answer your question, where we're showing lines fiscal years '26, '27, and '28 blank, that would be for one of your runways at the airport to go in and redo the pavement on that runway.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'll just close quick because it's getting a little bit long. Before 2002, the Merrill Airport never received an entitlement grant. Since then, we've received an entitlement grant every year. It's about $3.3 million that we didn't ever have, didn't even know about it. Also, back in 2002, the FAA maintains a registered aircraft. Aircraft have what they call N-numbers. It's a unique number to each airplane. And so the FAA maintains a database of where these airplanes are sitting. And in 2002, FAA's database showed that Merrill Municipal Airport had 13-based aircraft, 13. Today, we have 49. And we're working on the 50th one right now, so. The Airport Commission runs the airport well. It's quiet. You never see things blow up out there that you've got to come and fix. And so that's part of the problem sometimes, is it's quiet. So I appreciate you all letting us have this time tonight and for moving us forward on that agenda. I thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Is there any discussion from the council at this time? Or my recommendation is that we kind of digest this information because it was quite a bit of numbers and information. So if we can think about it, and we'll have more budget meetings coming up, that's for sure.
Yeah, I would like that.
If that's okay for the council as of this time.
I would agree with that. I guess I do have a question for Rod. What are your thoughts on this project initially, right now?
You know, you look at anything that we do here, taxpayers would consider it spending, but it's investment in the future, no different than every single street, every single building we have in town. You look out there and the potential for, for, what did you say, Rich? You had 19 on your waiting list? You had 19 airplanes? You know, and there may be the perception that, what does that matter to me? I don't fly an airplane. You look at companies that do bring maybe parts in and out or convenience and medevac, and it just, it's another opportunity for us. I mean, it's an amenity, I wouldn't say any different than, it's different than the treatment plant because everybody needs that. But it's an amenity that we have to, in the long run, we have to maintain. The FAA or the BOA and FAA have stuck a lot of money into that place. And I think part of the agreement was that we would maintain it. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of what we signed on to in the past where the money that we receive, that we'd be good stewards of it and maintain the airport and not see it deteriorate to the point where it's unsafe or... So it's a futuristic thing where we've got to keep moving forward. You may not think about tomorrow, but what about 10 years from now? And I know we looked at some stuff in the master plan where they're talking about speaking futuristic about carports and different things like that. Correct, that's getting a little too far off-base here, but there may be some other potential in the future here. So I guess that's my two cents worth. I'm for it. We've talked with our TID managers, Brian, as far as the funding. And TID 11 can handle this, this TID loan. State Street's coming up, and we've talked to him about that, and it can handle that. And we do have Grand Avenue, probably in the next couple of years, we're going to be doing a DOT grant with that. And that TID would also be responsible for covering that. And we feel very comfortable with these three projects that we could handle it.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
I have a couple of questions, one for Rich. Rich, is there any cooperation between NTC and yourself in terms of credit and work with, partnership with them in terms of training mechanics?
Currently, no, there's not. I have addressed the NTC several times, and it hasn't gone down that road yet. They're not, they're not focused because they do seek the value. But as it stands right now, no. So I have gone down that road. I've personally gone down that road.
And then my second question is, has there been an economic study, more recent one, in terms of impact that the airport has had on Merrill in terms of generation of money?
The economic impact studies have been a discussion point with BOA for some time. And at some point, BOA decided to do a statewide study of all airports in Wisconsin in an economic impact study. That process was started maybe 18 months ago, if I'm wrong. And I was told that our information would be available to us in mid-June of this year. And it's not. And so I've poked around and trying to figure out where it's at and what's going on. And the impact studies are finished. They're done, and they're sitting in the public property.
Public Affairs Office.
Public Affairs Office, attached to the Governor's Office in Madison, in DOT. I was very hopeful that we would have that because I think it would surprise you. But I don't want to guess what it is. But I think you'll be happy with the numbers when we finally get it. So I'm very disappointed. It was done by a company called JAviation out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. And they did nothing wrong. They got it done. And we had lots of conversations, but it's tied up right now.
Rich, what's your certification?
Currently, do you want to just stand up here?
Yeah. If you could, please.
Currently, I am an aircraft AMP. It's Airframe and Power Plant Technician licensed by the FAA with an authorization inspection. It's the highest rating you can get. There is no other ratings above this.
How many people are in the state that are like you?
I went to the IA seminar this year. I think I was the youngest one there, under the age of 70. But there was probably, there was probably 150 in the state. So the number's dwindling, unfortunately. But I did take note, and yeah, I was it.
Well, we're lucky to have.
For young, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If this project gets approved, when would the start date be? Is there a time frame?
I think we could be breaking ground in 2025.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to other operating budget requests. We have the water. Gabe or Emily?
All right. For the proposed water utility budget, there's not many changes. The areas of change are some of the chemicals prices. We did go out earlier this year and shop some different vendors, and we switched for better pricing. The other ones would be the increase in meters, maintenance meters with the building and everything. There's, otherwise, there's not much to this, just the...
I built in a 2.5% increase for payroll expenses. That's an assumption that will change as the, it usually mirrors what the general governments, you know, so we'll mirror, we'll clean it up as soon as we decide what we're going to do for the rest of the employees. I also assumed a 2% increase for insurance costs. That's just what I'm looking around and seeing, that insurance rates are going up. So I put a 2% inflation on there. And I think the biggest difference between 2025 proposed budget and the 2024 budget, it's about, what's the difference? It's going from, well, it's pretty darn close, it's 1% decrease. And the biggest change is the capital projects. So in 2024, on the last page, you can see we had about $141,000 of capital budgets approved. And in 2025, we're proposing $120,000 of capital projects. So that's the biggest difference between 2024 and 2025 proposed.
What page are you on, Emily? The very last of the packet, or?
Um, I don't know what page is on the packet. It looks like it's...
Three of 65.
Page two of 65.
Okay.
And then also the page after that would be our water and sewer service charges. I went through all of it. There's some I, in the past, it was always just a 3% increase. I went through and I evened it all out for materials and our labor. So there was no increases in some bigger increases that were adjusted just to even it all out with our time and material.
Does anybody have any questions on the water proposed budget?
Anybody?
Do you have adequate funds in your different things to fund everything?
Yes.
I mean, that's what makes your budget the easiest one, to get money in your pocket already.
Right. We're doing really good this year with everything. Some of the stuff we've taken on doing it ourselves in-house instead of hiring out for other companies is what's really holding us even with the increase on everything, so. Do them one at a time, or should I go with the wastewater right away?
Well, do, do you want to make a motion to forward this to the?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, approve the water budget as presented to the final budget meetings.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the water portion of the budget. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to wastewater.
The only changes is here is we're still waiting for a permit from the DNR for a discharge permit. We were supposed to have it this spring, but it sounds like they're anywhere from a year to a year and a half behind. So we're continuing our current permit or past one, so we'll keep that, so. Nothing will really change there besides the cost of materials again, and which hasn't gone up too bad. The only one would be industrial monitoring. That's for the factories and that. But the third page here, we adjusted the quarterly sewer rates for the testing. There's a tier one, tier two, and tier three. That hasn't been adjusted since 2004. So by adjusting them fees, that should cover the increase of last year's industrial monitoring.
What happened to your automatic?
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
What happened to your automatic gate down at the wastewater treatment plant?
We're waiting for permar. I think we have it all set up, and they have the equipment ordered. So we're waiting for parts here pretty soon so we can get it up and running.
Gabe, your tiers, how are they determined by the volume of sewage?
Water, you said, yep.
So on the sewer side, again, I did a 2.5% increase for payroll. I did a 2% increase for insurance. And even with those increases, there's a 10.2% reduction in the overall budget. So it's a net positive of $40,000 after revenues minus expenses. So again, it's the difference between 2024 and 2025 is the capital projects. In 2024, we had $250,000 of capital projects. And in 2025, we're proposing, oops, sorry, let me look here, capital. We've got $50,000 for IT improvements, $50,000 for lining of the sewer mains, $30,000 for clarifier primary drives, and $120,000 for the digester cleaning and inspection. And we'll have more information on those capital projects after the operating budget.
Any further questions?
Make a motion to send the sewer capital or budget request as submitted forward.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to forward sewer budget to the, to the budget session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next, we have landfill.
Finally, the landfill. We're putting in for a capital outlay, $15,000 for equipment. And this is another area we feel we can save that much a year. We used to test and sample ourselves years back. Engineering company we've been working with has gotten it down to testing about half as much in the last 15 years. So by the time we purchase this equipment, we're feeling we can save that much every year by doing it ourselves.
Just to put it out there, in case you guys have heard out on the street, so to speak, we do not have any issues out there with contamination. We are not digging up and moving it. I know I've heard that from a couple of different people as far as, when are you moving the landfill? And no, we do not have any issues right now.
How much time do we have left out there, if anything, a couple of years?
This is the, this is our old landfill that we monitor.
The one behind the town of Merrill Town Hall back there?
Craft Road and Merrill Town Hall.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The old, old landfill that we're, we inherited it.
Yeah, yeah.
We get all the good stuff.
I do want to point out that on the revenue side, we're assuming a ten thousand dollar levy. So there is some tax dollars going towards maintenance of this landfill. And then a transfer from the general fund, which is repaying a loan. And then fifteen thousand dollars in borrowing for the testing equipment.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to forward the landfill budget to the final budget meeting.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to forward the landfill budget to the final budget meeting? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have airport general fund budget.
They're all gone, suck one.
What's that?
They're all gone, let's talk.
Yeah, this is a pretty standard budget, just, I put a two percent increase, you know, for payroll costs. I put a little increase for insurance. Overall, it's a two point one percent increase in expenses. So it's, it's really just operations as normal with nothing, no changes.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to forward this to the budget session.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to forward the airport budget to the final budget meeting? Any discussion?
Can I remind the new people here that at the final budget meetings, you can go line by line through this again and say, you know what, I really don't think we need to fund that this year, and you can pull that out. So this is general, just a lump into each of these areas.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have aviation fuel budget. Emily, you got anything to add on that?
This one, do you, jump in whenever you want to. This is not a balanced budget, so we're proposing seventy-six thousand dollars in revenue and expenses are ninety-three thousand. So I'm just pointing that out, that it's not a balanced budget, we're spending more than we're taking in.
So we're selling fuel at a loss?
Well, there is inventory, so you fill up your tanks and you don't have that revenue in yet, so there's, there's a leg there.
But to your point, Mr. Kaler, we had talked about that earlier today and we are going to sit down because we want to make sure all of our costs are covered. And again, like Emily was saying, this I think is more inventory based, but we'll, we'll get that accounted for and we are going to look at that.
I know there's a pumper trucks in there that they're lined up to sell to, so I don't know if that will work towards this budget or not.
I know a lot of the fuel companies are hurting right now.
Alright, anything further? I'll make a motion to forward the airport aviation fuel budget to the final budget.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to forward the airport aviation fuel budget to the final budget? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have 2025 capital budget requests, utility.
First one is water filter maintenance for the iron and manganese. There's a manway that's corroded, that is going to be, need to be replaced. And when we do that, we'll test all the media in it and if we need to order and refill it, we will do that at that time also. The tank was put in in 2012. We've had one other time that we've added media to it. Second one is roof replacements at well three and five. Issue is when they take the tops off there, they need cranes to pull all the piping in out and then having it seal back up so it's getting worn and time to replace them too. We replaced well four last year because it was leaking in already. So these are the other two we're looking at.
Gabe, what do you replace them with?
The one is, I think, a rubber roofing and the other one, it's a concrete roof on there. So however, if they do with rubber or steel, we'll have to look at that, what they recommend.
What's the longevity, ten, ten years you have on there?
Fifteen to twenty, they say. Next one is, went over that a little bit with the landfill testing equipment. We'll be doing it our, we doing it ourselves and, and it'll pay for itself quickly.
Miss Williams?
We had IT improvements.
Oh.
We'll cover that one when Dustin does the IT projects.
I was gonna say, I don't have that on.
Page one.
Oh, and, well, in the, here, in the, as you're going down, that's not there, that's what we're...
Then we move on to the digester cleaning and inspection. We do that every five years. It's one, a lot to inspect the interior of it, plus all the sand and grit and dirt that collects in there. We need to clean that out so you can get decent circulation for it. We're still looking at other options. There's a few companies out there, so see if we can get them into the gate.
You can't do that yourself?
That's, that's too big of an operation with the liquid in them tanks, we don't have the equipment for that to be able to... What we haul is the dried sludge that we can land apply in fields. Then next is the manhole lining. We have eight manholes that are deteriorating pretty good and with water and storm and everything around there, they're too deep to just dig and replace ourselves. So we come in, we've done this in the past too. So that would be with that sewer lining. And then finally, the primary drives for the clarifiers. We've been getting different pricing and it will be, new, new equipment has come in a lot cheaper than getting them rebuilt. So we'll be looking at that. One's wearing out and we have three of them that will, will start fabbing up this winter, so be ready for spring. Is there any other questions that can answer them?
What does that do, Gabe, that last one?
It's, there's some flights that keep moving all the sludge in the tanks. And it's all chain driven, big plastic chains, and then it augers out the sludge into the digester, gets pumped in there.
Does IT improvements, water share, water and sewer, explain that quick?
Historically, we've split IT projects between the general fund and the water and sewer departments. Usually, it's fifty percent general fund, twenty-five percent water, twenty-five percent sewer. Because they do use the same IT as the city does and they also, I mean, it takes the burden off of the taxpayers by splitting it with those departments. So that's what we've done historically with IT projects.
Now, when you say, you're talking about information technology, correct?
Yes, yes, yep, sorry about that, yep.
Fifty thousand a year, every year?
No, these are projects coming up and that's, she just mentioned that they'll be explained by Dustin Brown here.
I saw Lyanna was in there for another fifty thousand, you get every year IT, so I was just clicking my head going, fifty grand a year to buy a new laptop.
How does money end up in the water and sewer fund?
Your bills.
How does what?
Like the fund balance?
That makes sense.
Yep, any, okay.
And that's why we get ding, we, in the past, because we were not making as much as the state says we would. And historically, we saw some huge water and sewer rate increases because we weren't keeping up like we were supposed to. But we're always running ahead, so.
Okay, thank you.
Emily, how much does that fund bring in typically in a year?
Which fund are we looking at?
The sewer replacement fund or the revenue pieces of the...
That one, we transfer about twenty thousand dollars a month into the sewer replacement fund and you can only use that sewer equipment replacement fund. You can only use that for certain eligible equipment projects related to the plant, treatment plant.
Okay, so the money that we take out for IT and things like that, that comes from?
Sewer rates.
Okay.
Yep, different fund.
Okay.
Any discussion? Nothing?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to send these capital requests to the final budget session. The utility, yeah.
Have a motion and a second to send the utility budget forward. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have city capital.
So with your permission, we'll start going through these projects and then rather than go, like, we'll go department by department presenting the projects. But then at the end, I have a sheet with all of the projects rated by their priority. So that might make more sense for us to talk about them rated by priority instead of by department by department. Can we try it that way?
Sure.
Okay, great. So we started with the airport and we already got a presentation on that one. So then we can jump to Command Car Sixty and the Fire Department.
Is it up there or here?
Doesn't matter. Step up to the plate, alright. We're on. So this, the Car Sixty is the marooned command vehicle. My predecessor had it scheduled to be replaced years ago, I've deferred it for quite some time. It's just due again, so to speak, relatively speaking, for your consideration. We do have it as a priority too. I know you're going to be considering a lot of other capital requests tonight and I'm here to tell you that if we need to defer it and you choose not to fund it this year, we can, we can definitely do that. I did bring with, I apologize, like I said, I wasn't sure even if it was going to be in or not. So I do have an update, it'll be included, I mentioned Laurie and Emily today, just some updates, I only made one copy because... We'll get that in the packet for you, it just gives an update on the miles that are on there and so forth, as well as a couple pictures, just showing the age of it, but...
Basically, it's in good running order.
Yep, like I said, I, I mean, my job is to present this to you, is something that eventually will need to be updated for capital. But by all means, if we need to defer and you want to cut back someplace, we can, we can do that in this vehicle.
Those of you who want to skip to the end, there's sixty-six thousand miles on there besides the wear and tear.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Klug?
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Dustin, you want to do IT projects?
Alright, there's two requests this year, the first one being our network storage device. Server is going into the tenth year of service. It provides all of our data, or majority of our data for all of our servers, virtual servers, currently email, files that everybody works with for Word, Excel, all that. I've replaced five or six drives now in the past year, it's starting to fail. I mean, it's just at its useful life. And unfortunately, I believe coming up within a year or so, it will end support to manufacturer. So I will not get priority one support if it fails and I would hate to, you know, have an emergency expense like that. The second is voice gateways, that one's forwarded from last year, you might recall. This provides emergency location services for each site. And in the event that there's a network issue, there's a functional phone at the, at each location. It's more of a, I don't know if it's a full compliance thing, but I'm, I'm sure, you know, dispatch would like to know if there's a call from enrichment center instead of city hall, you know, if they call nine one one. So that one, I believe there's ten units split up. Currently, the two, city hall and fire, they handle the majority of our call routing as they are, are in dress for the calls through the telco. So. Any questions?
What were the IT things that we did last year? Because you had the...
There were five requests that we had last year, I remember that.
Versus this first one where you're talking about the storage server. What's the difference between the storage server and the things we did last year?
The switches from last year?
Yeah, so I have, what I've been working on, the switches and firewalls all came in over the past month, month and a half or so. So I've been working on getting those configured and deployed. I'm just kind of going in phasing so I don't have downtime. You know, I'm trying to avoid downtime in every department essentially. The storage server is what holds our data, the switching is essentially how all of our buildings communicate, between phones, computers, how they get internet access.
And they're all still going to be compatible?
Yeah.
Is there a primary and backup server?
Sorry?
You have a primary and backup server, just one?
For the storage?
Right.
The unit has a high availability built in. So if there is a need for a failover, the idea is that it allows for failure in the unit. We don't currently have a, a full offsite, like everything can run just on a light switch. That would cost a significant amount more and something for down the road.
Well, you could use this for a backup, right? You're gonna replace it?
If it's gonna be out of compliance, I wouldn't trust it.
So I mean, I could get it, you know, set up and running or something at Fire Department. The problem is if there's a failure with it, there's nothing I can do. Because it's, it's, it's past its life, so.
Now, this fifty-seven five, this is for a maintenance contract also? Is that just replacing the server?
That's the hardware in the initial, I believe it's a three or five year term for the initial maintenance and, and everything. So if a drive fails, they ship a drive that's here within a day. The unit is built to allow for a failed drive, so that way there's no issue. So we can do that. I mean, I could always get on the shelf spares, but we also build in spares into the unit. So if one fails, another one automatically takes over, so there's no issue, if that makes sense.
It does.
There's, there's a lot to it.
How many drives are in that, the specific server that you're looking at?
Currently, our storage server has forty-eight drives, but I'm looking to consolidate that to like a, you know, because it's currently two shelves, I guess, if you want to call it that.
Right.
Trying not to be too technical here. So there's twenty-four in each, I'm looking to consolidate that because the technology, since we got this one ten years ago, is much farther.
Right. But it'd still hold the same amount that you need?
It would probably hold more actually and be faster, it's just ten years ago.
That's true.
With the current server, are you, was it still in, like, the drives are in maintenance or have you been paying to have those replaced?
That maintenance currently ends, I want to say, July.
But that covers the drives right now?
Yes.
That you've been replacing or?
Yep, it's an annual cost that we, we pay and then, you know, all drives, all, you know, level one, tier one... Yep, it's an annual cost that we, we pay and then, you know, all drives, all, you know, level one, tier one support, whatever.
This network storage server is, is an actual server with the drives, or is it just?
It's a SAN.
Storage, just a SAN?
Net app, if you're familiar, that's currently what we have.
Okay. So then there's separate, so then there's separate servers that are actually running, have the processors and RAM?
Yep.
And how new are those?
The exact year, I wanna say, those are five-ish years, five to six years, they'll be coming up soon.
Getting replaced too, okay.
Any questions for Dustin?
These are the two items that were talked about with the water and sewer funding the other twenty-five and twenty-five of each of these.
So the number in front of us is our balance, or it's the, well, the sewer will cover twenty-five percent of this?
This is just the general fund, sorry, I interrupted, this is just the general fund portion.
Thank you.
And I think you had talked about the voice gateways, it's something that, I mean, we can live without?
We can, and, you know, if you were to, again, if you were to have to cut something, um, the voice gateways, because there's ten of them built into that cost for each location, if one fails, it's cheaper to replace that. You know, kind of on a, a one-off basis. Again, it's, it's a more of an emergency and location thing versus a everyday use type of thing.
Is that, is that the only thing that the voice gateways are used for, is for emergency location? Or is it for like, or is it for like? Or emergency calls as well? Is it just for location data?
It, yeah, if they call nine-one-one, because our current phone server's here in the backup at the fire station, um, you know.
So it's, it's using a standard phone line to get that emergency call?
Yes, yep, there's a local, yeah.
So you can find me in the woods with this? Follow her dead at my address, Dan?
Only if we have your address.
It's a chip we made you eat when you started.
All good?
Okay, thank you.
Move on.
Yep, there are two library projects. The first one is a elevator upgrade. Um, this one is just under twenty thousand dollars. Um, it is listed as critical, it's like a critical upgrade to the elevator, so we have a functioning elevator at the library. Um, the library did sign contract for this already and they have agreed their endowment is paying fifty percent. Because if we waited until January after the budget, it would've been more expensive. So they opted to do this, so we would be, the request is to reimburse the endowment fund for the, for their half that they're paying.
Any questions on that?
Is the elevator working again? Because I heard it was broken.
TJ?
That was after the power went out, they just had to flip the breaker.
Got it.
My understanding, the, uh, the upgrade will take care of some of the part replacements that they no longer have in stock or make?
Yep, uh, some of the parts, the board is, uh, it will be obsolete, so they'll put in board and, and then there'll be parts to work on it if need be.
The second project was to replace, the request is to replace carpeting at the library. Last year, we funded replacement of carpet at the first floor. This request is for the second floor. And then in twenty-twenty-six, they have a request for the, replacing the carpet on the third floor.
A question on the carpeting, is that, they were doing some other type of reconfiguration or something over there? Is that not going to, I guess, we don't wanna put a new carpet and then have them come in and mess it up with a project, is what I'm...
This isn't in addition to that, um, room that they're developing.
But...
That's, it wouldn't be in there.
Okay, that, that's my...
I think that the room you're developing is going in the old, original library itself.
No, it's in the northwest or northeast corner of the second floor.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's still in the kids' area there, kinda off to the, that, um, east right side, yeah. Yep, that northeast corner. You go up the stairs to the right and...
I just didn't wanna put new carpet in and have...
No.
Replace it after.
They're putting a different, different flooring in there.
TJ, is the carpet war, is it bad, is it?
It's not horrible, um, uh, I mean, it's definitely...
You can grab a mic, TJ.
She's gonna go. Pass her on.
When it says priority two, I mean, it's definitely a priority two. It's not a huge, huge need right now, um, but it's definitely something that we can look into in the next coming years.
You can just keep and just take it over.
Okay, sounds good. Um, do you have any other questions with that?
The first floor was bad.
Yeah.
And that's why we went with it for twenty-twenty-four, but if you think we can hold it off?
I think so.
I'd make a motion to pull the library carpet.
Do you wanna go through these at the end? I mean, because there's some others I wanna...
Yeah, I have a question about the carpet.
All right, we can go through it at the end then.
Yeah, we'll wait till...
Yeah, if we wait till the end and then everyone asks for the polling of what they are wanting.
Okay. Next, we have Merrill Fairgrounds fencing. We got a donation for that and county's letting us use the ARPA funds, correct Rod, to, for installation?
Correct, and, uh, we're lucky, the donation was, I do believe, like twenty-one thousand dollars for the fencing. I would anticipate, I think we had a price worked up somewhere in the twenty thousand dollars to install it. And then, um, there were conversation about any additional, um, improvements down there as far as fencing. I would, they're all donations in, in ARPA funds, so I would think it wouldn't matter if it was sixty thousand or forty thousand, it's all money that's being given to us. But, um, I anticipate that to be closer to forty thousand than sixty, so if you wanna just pencil that in.
And that donation...
What's the rationale for fencing?
Um, right now, when you look...
I, I, I know, sort of, but can you explain?
Right now, when you look at what the fair does, what the rodeo does, they put up snow fence.
Yeah.
Appearance-wise and just the cost of putting it up and taking it down and, um, we don't plan on having gates in there to shut this down. I mean, that wasn't the intention, it was just to kinda clean things up. When there is a function going on, they can put barricades across or fencing. And we had talked about having some mobile fencing that they could use, you know, during events, just to control, um, traffic as far as being able to slide them around. That somewhat matched the fencing, but, um, that wasn't part of the original purchase, something that will be talked about in the future.
Is this chain link fence?
No, it's a...
It's what?
Similar to Marathon Park with, it's a wrought iron look, it's a little thinner metal than that, but it's, it's a, that type of look.
And it would cover?
It would go from the armory...
Sixth Street, all the way down to...
Armory over to the dog pound, the dog pound to the enrichment center fence, which is on top of the retaining wall there. And then pick up and, and continue down Sales Street down to the fair board or the county's corner down there.
Okay, so the north side and the west side?
East side also.
East side also, okay.
And this is fencing that was, decorative fencing that was found by the rodeo association and they bought it and gave it to the city?
Okay.
And I will say, as someone that puts up that snow fence, it's horrible, it sucks, it takes a lot of hours and it, yeah, we get a lot of complaints of how it looks. And it just is what it is, but it helps for, at least the fair. It helps if animals get out. That's our main reasoning for putting it out, because then they're not able to ra- rampage through the city, you know, you know, all scared out of their minds, because they're far from where they know. So that, that is part, most of the reason why we put up the fence, but it will definitely help with other functions, so.
And there is a hot bush button issue that we will deal with in the, in the future here. Um, along the east side, the red pine are probably in the same location as the fence should be. Um, if we kind of looked at last week's power outage throughout the city, um, those are mature trees and they're right next to a three-phase line. Um, I've, I've been talking with a few people, trying to convince them to take the trees down before you put the fence up, so we don't have an issue down the road. And plant trees back away from it where, kinda like we did along the Sixth Street side.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the fencing? We'll move on to pool heater. Dan?
Okay, um, replace pool heater. This one, um, is something that we've been looking at for a little bit, but it finally came, bubbled to the top this, this year. Uh, we had to have a couple of different contractors come and take a look at it and took us a while to get the, our pool heater up and running for the season this year. And, uh, throughout the course of that process, we've discovered that there was quite a bit that was, was wrong with, with this. So the difference to fix it versus replace it was under five hundred dollars. So we're recommending that we just take the old lock and wire out and replace it with a new one. Um, this is our priority number one. Without this, we don't have heated water at the aquatic center.
How old is this heater?
Uh, twenty sixteen was when we opened it, but it's a twenty fifteen model, all the stuff that we have is fifteen, opened in sixteen, so going on ten years.
Minus the time we weren't open?
Which probably does it worse.
Yeah.
Letting that sit doesn't do it very mu- very good. Any questions?
It doesn't work anymore, or why, it's just a phase replacement?
Uh, no, it's, it's basically shot. For us to fix it, we, we band-aided it pretty hardcore to get it through the rest of this, this season. So for us to fix what needs to be fixed was about thirty-three and a half thousand versus thirty-four-ish if we just replace it brand-new with a warranty.
Ten-year warranty?
I wish.
Any discussion?
Okay, next one, Streeter Square basketball courts, uh, this is, uh, been on here for a few years, um, speaks for itself. The court is just about shot. A picture in there should tell you everything if we would replace this. Um, the hoops and the standards are still good, we would take those out and put them back in once we were done putting a court that's full-sized and then a fence on the south side so that basketballs don't have a chance to roll down Mill Street into the downtown area. But again, this is something that was utilized quite a bit and now it's, it's almost unusable. So we're just about at the point here now where we either just get rid of it or replace it with something that's, um, usable.
You said it did get used a lot, I mean... In the past.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's in really tough shape, I wouldn't think anybody would wanna use it now.
You can hardly dribble a bas-...
Do you wanna consider just pulling it out?
We're at that point, because it's, you, you can hardly dribble a basketball on it, right? The only thing that's left in there is the rock aggregate that was in the, the pavement when they first paved it.
How many basketball courts do we have in all of our parks?
This would be the second one, we have one at Stang.
Dan, do you ever consider moving the hoops down to like five, six feet for littler kids, smaller kids?
There's, there's a setup...
I know in some cities and some many parks, and I was in Cross Plain, Cross Plains this last week, they have nice, for younger, younger children, not adult play, but younger children. In that kind of a park, you already have small children. And I don't wanna waste your time, I mean, it's something that could be brought up in your park commission.
Yeah, absolutely, no, we can put a hoop on the corner or something like that, that's, that's off to the side, especially if we build it closer to normal-sized court, a normal-sized court.
Older kids are usually down by that Lions Park anyway.
By Stang? Yeah, you'll find some, but there, there'll be others that'll play there too, just, just whether it's closer to their home or, um...
But it is a need, I, I mean, I, I, when I was on the park commission, that was pretty rough. I mean, there's large gaps in the pavement and it is pretty well torn.
Yep.
The one by Stang's gets used a lot, right?
Yep, yeah, it does.
There's also courts at the middle school and the elementary schools?
There is at the middle school, um, and Kate Goodrich does too. They're, uh, the ones at the middle school are just poles sticking up out of the parking lot, so there's quite a few evenings where you can't use them because they allow parking after hours. So they, they do have some that they use during school and if there isn't an event or activity going on, they can use those.
Washington does have some as well and so does, um, St. John's, I believe, has some in their little playground, but, um...
But I'm looking at forty-five thousand dollars to pay a, pay a basketball court?
But it's fencing, fencing and making, making the court larger and fencing.
Larger and fencing, forty-five K?
Yeah, and there's a chance that, that it may be, it may be less, you know, that, this depends on what the, those prices are. I don't wanna be underneath what our projection is, it's, then I have to come back and ask for more.
What would we think it might cost to keep it the same if we didn't do fencing or make it larger?
I'm sorry?
Would you think the cost would be to keep it the same size and to not do fencing?
I wouldn't do it.
Okay.
If we're gonna keep it the same size, it, it's...
It's very short.
It is, it's...
I mean, I drove by, I drive by there quite a bit.
We shouldn't spend money on keeping it the same size.
Are we gonna light it?
Uh, no, but that was not part of, part of this. We, I mean, we can, we can absolutely look at tapping in and just putting some halogens like we did, or, you know, LEDs. We didn't consider that, though.
What's the cost to remove something like this? Is it not a whole lot more to just go forward with the plan?
We didn't host it.
Yeah, our friends at the street department would gladly do it for us.
For a large fleet.
They'd do everything else for us.
Gladly is a strong word. Oh, come on.
I was about to say the gladly part, I think, could probably get left out.
The boat landing at Odds Park, by the way, was very well done.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other basketball court questions? Police Aquatic Center Spiral Slide Activity Pump, there's, so there's four pumps that we have down in the pump pit at our pool. We have two ten-horse, two fifteen-horse. The fifteen-horse pumps, um, are, are used for operation of our spiral slides, they're red and the green. And then we have the activity pump and the family slide, those are our ten-horse pumps. This is a, this is a reoccurring problem that just about everybody has with their feature pumps. They all have to be in a, well, especially in Wisconsin, but in, for, in our instance, it's a pump pit. They run like crazy during the season and just like the heater, you turn them off. Um, we winterize them, just like everything else, but every once in a while, you have them where they seize up, our impellers won't go. Um, we have to take them, in our case, we take them to Linder and they have to break them loose and recondition them. Every time that we do that, depending on if there's seal issues or not, it's, it can be fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. It's, every time, it's over a thousand. So it just, after three straight years of having one or two, um, we are looking at possibly having them replaced. Now, this would be one area where it might be smart to, um, break this into either a two-year or a four-year replacement so that we're not, part of the aquatic center, and it's a, initially, it's a good thing, but we have all even-aged equipment there. Everything is the same age, so once you start seeing things happen, it's, they're all gonna be ten years old. And this might be a, a wise thing for us to either replace one ten-horse and a fifteen-horse, or both the fifteens one year and then the tens the next year, or pick a ten, then a fifteen, a ten, you know, make it a four-year process. Either way, it's, it, we are replacing what is going to need to be replaced on a preventative maintenance standpoint. And on the flip side, for whoever inherits this in the future, at least we know that we have time where we don't always have to replace four pumps and we don't always have to replace all of everything. Does that make sense?
Are there two pumps that are problematic versus the other two, or? I mean, you know what I mean to?
I know.
How, how would you, because we don't wanna replace two and then all of a sudden comes pool time, the other two go all too and it's like, then we're not budgeted for.
I know, I know, um, not necessarily, they've been equal opportunity pains in the rear. Um, and that, we've had one of the tens and fifteens went one year and then a fifteen and the other ten went the other time. And then we had two of the tens that we had to have broken loose. So, yeah, I wish, I wish there was a single prob- So, yeah, I wish, I wish there was a single problem child that we knew. We would go with, there was one of the tens for sure has, had to be done twice. So-
Do these have been maintained, basically, or they've been rebuilt, essentially, these current ones that we have?
Yeah, we've already had, we've already had each one of them refurbished at least once, yep.
Okay, but they haven't actually been fully replaced, replaced yet?
Nope.
Okay.
So, my hearing is right, we're looking at about seventy to a hundred thousand maintenance a year for the next few years on the Aquatic Center to replace items that are ten-years-old.
Head full funding. If we give full funding.
If we get, were to give full funding this year.
That's just for pumps and heaters.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, just maintenance.
Not cracks and chemicals.
Yeah, we've already had a fair share of that.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, this thirty-five is for how many pumps?
Four.
So, if we broke that down and, you know, had $15,000 for the next four years and we'd have, take two of the pumps and put them on the shelf and rebuild them, you're not putting thirty-five thousand, you're putting fifteen in each, each year. What's that?
Less interest.
Correct, but it's better than borrowing thirty-five.
That's what I would like to see, is do a couple this year and a couple next year, because then they're not all in the same year, if they can make it reconditioned.
Well, you would purchase one, one new one of each of them and keep the other two. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan?
That's correct, yep.
We would have them reconditioned, sitting on the shelf in case we had issues throughout the year where it's, but I think Dan was talking about even possibly breaking into a four-year cycle where you, you're not having the new house syndrome where everything goes at the same time.
Yeah, everything there is even-aged and that's, for ten years, it was a good thing-ish. I mean, yeah, we had cracks, we had leaks, that, that happens. We wish it didn't, but once we, once we enter into Aquatic Center territory, it needs to be maintained and taken care of.
Well, I would personally prefer to see a four-year plan where we just do one per year.
Would ten, ten this year cover it, Dan?
Yep, yep.
How many days was it open this year?
How many? Uh, ten.
Ten weeks.
Yep. Yeah, we only actually missed four days.
Seemed like it would have been a whole lot less with how much rain we got.
Didn't rain at the Aquatic Center. It's always sunny.
Didn't have to buy water then?
It was always wet at the Aquatic Center, is the correct.
Yeah.
All right, move on, park entrance signs?
Park entrance signs, these are, again, from late nineties. They were four-by-four poles with polyplastic covers over the top and then it's, it's like a, almost a blow foam that we used back then and installed in nineteen ninety-nine. They, they're great signs, had a great run. They are now starting to weather check and there must be bugs in them because we've been seeing a lot of woodpeckers pecking holes in them. The one at Riverside fell off, we had to remount. They're, can we do without them? Sure, it just looks bad at this point. So, I think, we brought this up last year and it's the first impression of the park.
You have five of the signs total?
Five.
Looks like in your pictures you have chose five.
No, we'll have about eighteen by the time we're done.
Are there any tourism grants that are available for some of that?
Tourism grants? Like our, our tourism grant?
Like any tourism grant that might fund some of the cost of a-
Uh, maybe look into it. That might be something a little more specialized. These are park entrance signs, so I don't know that if that would qualify for marketing or not.
We could replace these in stages too, though, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, we can do anything. It's whatever you guys are comfortable doing or not doing. Any other questions? Okay, next one, finished concrete apron around shelters. So, this will be more so for Otz, Stang, Riverside. These are rentable shelters that we have. We did this at Kitchenette here, not last year, but end of the year before. The idea behind this is maintenance and safety-wise, so we don't have gravel chunks always up in our park shelter. We don't have dirt getting blown back or sprayed back from the drip lines of our shelters during storms and rain events. It saves us on time and it also looks nicer. So, again, it's a, it's a priority two, I believe, we put on here. These are all things that, you know, if you didn't want to fund, you don't have to fund it, but it certainly looks a lot nicer and it, it helps our crew when we go through and, and get things up and ready to go each day, seven days a week from April first, especially through October first.
Could this be done in-house?
Yeah. Probably. Right, Dustin?
Yep. Yes, we actually did the last ones too.
Yeah. They do great work.
That's what I-
And we appreciate it very much.
Remember that later in the meeting.
Any other questions? Smith Center Rental Skates. This one here-
It's only materials.
Um, we're looking, looking to, in this one here, if, if we go in stages, this is another area where we can, where we can save on our request, but at, at some point, our stock of rental skates are in, in pretty poor shape and they're obviously not going to get better as we continue using them. So, it's something that we do generate some revenue with. It's, it's a popular thing for our public skates. There's not a lot of people that have skates or carry skates or keep skates or are going to purchase skates. It's a good way, especially for those people or class groups that are coming out. They can try skating without having to make an investment besides a $4 rental fee. A lot of the skates that we have, we're fortunate that we have some people that donate used skates that they're high schooler after they graduate or whatnot, doesn't use anymore. So, we do get some that way, but those have such a short shelf life on them or they're already in average to below-average condition that sometimes it might be slightly better than the ones that we're going to throw in the dumpster, but it'll get us by for another year or two. We've been doing that for a very long time. So, this way, even if, if we take twenty-twenty-five pair each year and, and purchase some new ones and, again, throw those, those out, that puts us on a cycle towards replacement or at least the cycle that gets us caught up quicker than we can with the limited amount of budget. We don't have that excess operating budget to spend on this anymore.
How many pairs of skates are you talking about for this?
This would be about a hundred pair.
And what kind of revenue does the skate rental generate? I mean, how much could you realistically set aside per year from that revenue to put towards repurchasing skates year after year?
Two to three thousand each year on a conservative guess.
That's the revenue part of it?
I'm sorry?
That's the revenue part of the-
Yeah, it's about what we could get, yep. And that depends on how many public skates that we have. That, those things kind of depend on youth hockey and figure skaters and our game schedules that we have from the Blue Jacks varsity hockey team. But, yeah, that, that's one area that does generate revenue.
That revenue goes towards operations. So, I mean, if you set that aside, you're going to have to backfill the operations. So, it's-
Any other questions? At last, certainly not, at least, park shelter keypad locks. Again, this one's just more of an efficiency and a convenience, but forever we've, when you rent or reserve a park shelter, we made that leap into the twenty-first century finally a few years ago by going with online reservations, but now you still have to drive out to the Smith Center, pick up your key for your facility and then when you're done, you have to return it. This would be a way where we could have something like an Airbnb-ish where when you reserve your park, we could send an email or a text message that says, "Your code is one-two-three-four." You know, the key is here. When you're done, just push the button and you're ready to go so that each person would have a different code for the weekend. Would save us security-wise and/or expense-wise too. If somebody happens to lose a key, we don't have to redo everything each time at a certain location. So, it, again, is it a major priority? No, it's not, but it, it's something that would be a convenience for our users and it would be a convenience and an efficiency thing for us. Any questions? Thank you.
Corey?
Two squad cars, please, and, yeah. So, it's our annual request. Normally, we, we can narrow it down to one or two squad cars and unfortunately, it's a two-squad year. Squad six and eight, the two Durangos that were purchased in twenty-one are coming due and they'll be at or over a hundred thousand miles by the time we would get a replacement. So, we're looking for two.
We currently have every vehicle that we've ordered, correct?
We have it. We have, the truck is in, but we're waiting in line for outfit, so. Which is typical. We usually get delivery later in the year and by the time we get it outfitted, it's fall, so. Yes. Our dealers are pretty good at working with us and matching state bid price, so.
And these two cars that will still allow you to keep one for the second SRO officer?
Yes, yeah, so this, this replaces the, the commonly shared squad cars for patrol and we'll just have to pull out one that we would normally auction off and retain it for potentially a second SRO.
How do we sell the old ones?
Auction. Uh, we've been doing better at auction versus trade-in, so, yeah, that's what, the way we've been going.
We go to the Wisconsin surplus auction.
I want to know, if it sells for eight thousand, the buyer pays eight hundred to Wisconsin surplus, it doesn't come off our top at all. Doesn't cost us a nickel.
Thank you. State Street Reconstruction, Tid Eleven.
I think most of you probably have driven down State Street. It's probably one of our worst streets in the city and we've been focusing on matching up surface with underground conditions as far as sewer and water. This one rose to the top. It's not going to be cheap. It's going to be close to a million dollars to, to do all the way from Grand Ave up to Tenth Street. There are one section in there that has water in it, but we got to replace the sewer and so it's, it's going to be a, I won't say a, another O'Day Street, but it's going to be a long project. Anybody have any questions on that piece of road? Again, Tid Eleven, this is within a half mile of Tid Eleven and Emily checked into the Tid availability or Tid health there and-
Yeah, Tid Eleven's doing very well.
That's one we referred to for the FBO hangar also as far as Tid Eleven goes. The next project, some of you weren't on the council at the time, but Geis Meat Service came to us and asked if we would allow them to hook into our system. They will pay for an eight-inch line from the freeway to Johnson Street and they're going to pay for their portion under the highway, under the Prairie River and to their facility, it'd be a force main that would dump into a manhole. We would like to upsize that from Johnson Street to where we go north on G. And so, we would have a cost of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand to upsize that for, for future development and possible expansion eastward. While we're putting in sanitary, it would make sense for us to put in water at the same time. And that portion, I do believe, we had listed at $400,000 for the water to be installed. We would get it to, high line and the gas transmission line runs straight north there. We would get it to there and then go approximately 500 feet north. We wouldn't take it all the way up to the freeway or to the highway. We feel that we would get to that point and, and see what happens. And it's a classic case of chicken and egg, what comes first? If we have the facilities in there, we're hoping it's more shovel-ready. Eventually, it's considered an investment. Tid thirteen does not have any revenue at this time, so we would have to, in our borrowing plan, use, well, Tid sharing is our proposal as far as from the Tids that are doing well that would support this, if you want to touch on that, if there's anything to add.
Yeah, other options we could look at if we really want to do this project is advance from the general fund, general fund borrowing and repay. I mean, if this is a project we want to do, we'll look at all of the different options, how we can fund it.
What's our benefit, Ron?
Our benefit is, Geis is going to pay about $400,000 to put in sanitary sewer from Johnson Street to where it crosses the freeway. That's something that we would eventually have to do to develop that area. We are also going to be treating somewhere in the neighborhood of $27,000 worth of, I think that was the number we came up with, of their sewage. Yes, it does cost us something to, to treat that, but we feel it's, we would make a certain percentage of that would be income for the sewer fund.
I don't want to be a pain, but for the next meeting or sometime, could I see a printout of sort of the plan and sort of see what the layout is?
Yep.
What's going on and where it goes?
Absolutely. From Rhindell Printing on Highway G. We would take it down, we'd go east to where the gas substation is there.
Yep.
Just before the overhead. We go straight north and tie in right where it hits the highway. And then they would, we're going to be responsible for the bidding and installation of that. They're going to be responsible for paying for it. We're going to upgrade a certain portion of that for sizes for future use. That would be $120,000 for the sanitary. At the same time we're doing that, we have traffic control items, pavement items, we have restoration items. You get efficiency when you do both at the same time as putting in water next to it. Again, it's, it's, we're hoping that, and we've been hoping for a while, but it's an investment in the future as far as developing that area. And if, for some reason, it doesn't take off and we want to change that tid down the road into a mixed-use tid and allow housing to be built out there, that's an option too.
Does the city own any of that?
We own sixty-five acres there. We own all of that, yep.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any questions on that?
I don't remember if, I think that was before a couple of you were on the council that, they came to us.
Right when I was coming in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, retaining wall repairs are on the east side of the Cosmo. There's an entrance into the, the basement of the Cosmo or the apartments down below and that wall is tipping. We've noticed probably over the last four years, it, it's moved probably about six inches in the last four years, so it's, it's a preventative maintenance issue. We don't think it's going to tip over overnight, but it's something that we should, we should do. Our forces would remove it and we do have a, a number from a contractor to pour the wall, footings in a wall in there, so. Total came to 35,000. Any questions there?
I do have to say the owner of the Cosmo, every time I walk by, points out to me that wall is bad, so.
And based on current Tid projections, we would not need to borrow for this. We could do this out of operating.
Well, out of Tid-
Tid six.
Tid six.
Yeah.
Getting on to street resurfacing and Dustin will take it over, but Emily and I kind of looked at this program and in the past, we were at a hundred thousand. Are we on that one? I think that's the right one, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, I'm looking, yeah. Last year, we had $200,000 on this project. I think it's right on the cover sheet.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, yeah, the, my sheet is wrong.
Yep, it's right on the cover sheet as far as capital projects, but in the explanation, in the past, we've gone a hundred thousand and it's gone way over as far as being able to do the amount of work for that hundred thousand. So, the last year, we increased it to 200,000. Normally, we have a project, we call it an M1 project where it's- Normally, we have a project, we call it an M1 project, where it's curb and gutter gravel and pavement would be incorporated with part of a project that would include sewer and water that was outside of a tid. We normally put 150,000 towards that. We borrowed that money for surface repair on projects that, like again I said, had utilities underneath it. We don't have that issue this year. We don't have a project where we're going to be replacing it outside of a tid. So what we're proposing is just putting the two together at 250. Normally, it would be at that 250 mark for both of them, so that's what we're looking Any questions on that one? Actually reducing the overall from what we did last year of 200 and then 150, it would have been at 350. We are knocking it down to 250, but it will give us a little bit more on the normal resurfacing that we're looking to do and I'll let Dustin go from there, as far as what the projects are.
Sure. Yeah, Rod alluded to the trick to resurfacing is trying to find paving projects that don't interfere with water and sewer or that don't have, you know, aged utilities. So, next year's projects are slated to be essentially the three-way stop, so somewhere just east of the three-yard bridge through the intersection and then Water Street. It's probably a two-year paving project on water, but we'll go as far as we can next year. Specifically through Sierra Pacific area, that's the worst by far, but very minimal utility work there, a little bit of storm work, no curb and gutter, so...
But you're going to resurface the three-yard stone bridge?
Correct.
The state does own the bridge, but we own the surface. Figure that out.
Yep.
We get all the good stuff.
Moving on, steel coating, this is our annual request. You know, that number has creeped up over the years too, just like everything else. It's steady. We're going to keep it at 60,000 for the foreseeable future. My plan next year is to seal coat Taylor Street, at least our portion of it, from Airport Road to Champagne Street. I'm going to try to work with the Town of Merrill to do their portion at the same time. It would be cost-effective to do both, but they're at the age where they need a steel coat now.
If you take the time to get out and look at the surface, there's some spider cracking that now is the time to get at it and preserve what we can.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on to concrete maintenance. This is our sidewalk program. This has been going extremely well. We've taken it on the last couple of years in-house. This year, the guys should complete Districts seven and eight, so we'll be inspecting here again this fall for next year and my plan is to do Districts one and two, or at least as much of two as we can. There isn't much sidewalk in District one. District two has quite a bit, but we may as well inspect and be ready to go and go as far as we can. There's no questions on that, I guess we'll be back to Dan here.
Yeah, we got, we do have two items as far as topsoil screening. I think that's on there, isn't it?
It's after the trees.
Oh, well, I think the trees kind of go along with projects. We're trying to replace the trees that we take off. State Street will be one where we remove quite a few trees and I think limited budgeted in the Park Department, I think there's 6,500 as far as their trees. What we've been trying to do is replace them after a project. O'Day Street, we didn't have much for trees, but I think the $10,000 mark is something that we normally shoot for. Dan, would you have an issue if we cut that in half for next year? As far as replacement on, since O'Day Street didn't have it, you kind of do it in the year after, don't you?
That's correct, yep. We'll take what we can get and appreciate it.
That would be one that could probably be halved.
Do the residents have any say of whether they want to have trees replaced or not?
They do, yeah. Even though it's city pro...
I'm getting two answers.
You get, well...
They do. He doesn't listen to them, but they do.
Who doesn't listen? So, it is city property, so if we want to plant trees on the boulevard, it is well within our rights to do so. On the flip side, is it worth it if somebody is vehemently opposed to it? We have, at least I personally have not planted a tree or two in a place or two or four or five where people are not willing to have it put in there even though it's our property.
Well, this is what's come to me a few times already, just in the few months that have been on, is hey, the city tree did damage to my vehicle. Are they going to pay for it? Is it standard answer, huh?
No.
No? So, you know, the road systems do damage to water lines and sewer systems and I'm not sure why we continue to plant besides beautification along the street. I'm not sure it's a good program.
Stormwater runoff, heating and cooling, I mean, there's a lot more positive effects than there are.
If we're going to plant them, we need to, you know...
Need what?
They constantly get one, they do damage too.
Clean up behind them every fall.
For as many negative comments, I think we get just as many positive comments as far as...
Yeah.
Or Tree City USA too. And we're down with you, and we're down with you.
Next item would be topsoil screening. We're just about out of topsoil that we use for different projects throughout the year. Normally, we do it every two years. I think we're on our, going on our third year.
Yeah.
That number is 25,000. The following project or item would be crushed gravel. We use that for several projects throughout the year and we are getting down there on supply of our inch and a quarter. We do have three-quarter inch that we probably won't crush next year, so we're looking at right around 50,000 and that number hasn't gone up for, I want to say, probably eight years.
Right.
We just, we're getting less for our dollar. Any questions on those two items?
All right, if there's no other questions, the two equipment...
Which one is correct, though, back on this crushed ground, crushed street material?
50,000.
Should it's 150,000 or...
Should be 50.
150 over the next five years, 50,000 every other year.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, at the Street Department, our two equipment replacement requests this year are, the first is a one-ton dump truck. This one is, I think it's a 2006. This was actually a flatbed truck. It used to pull the recycling trailer around town, so it has four times as many hours as miles on it actually from idling, just reaching its end of life. It's one of our critical ones that actually plows alleys too, so it will get a new plow. We won't put a sander in the new one, but it will be basically a straight replacement of a one-ton dump truck that we have. And the last one is a one-ton service truck. So this is the truck you see, it's all white, it's got service body, full doors all the way in the back. This is the truck that's out all summer doing our storm sewer repairs. It's got a crane in the back for lifting manholes. This was bought, used back in 2009. It's just getting to the age where it's actually hard to find parts for it now and the body is steel on this, so it's rusting pretty badly. We're patching holes in the service boxes right now, so we'd replace it with something very similar. The body would either be aluminum or fiberglass though to prevent rust.
Neither one of these are EV vehicles, are they?
No.
Okay.
You're wrong or what? What'd you say? Ask if they're EV vehicles.
I asked if either of these were EV vehicles.
No.
I think you need a lot more maintenance than we're already doing.
That's what it takes to get them.
No.
You wouldn't get them.
I still think we need to look at Enterprise and their truck rental program because they gave a presentation to the county one year and I think that could save us a lot of money, but that's a different cart for a different horse. As far as the capital products in the 2025 proposal, it's the airport maintenance hanger. Do we want to, I don't know what your thoughts are as far as, should we put that on as another meeting altogether? So like just defer that one to the next cowl or...
Yeah, defer to the next budget cowl.
Yeah, that one I would defer.
So I'll make a motion to refer the fixed base operator maintenance hanger to the next committee of the whole that is appropriate for scheduling.
I will second that motion.
Soon. I'll let them figure out in the schedule where it would be appropriate to throw it back at us, whether it's towards the end or, you know, or maybe...
So sometime with, before November, I would think, yeah.
I have a motion and a second to move the fixed base operator maintenance hanger from the airport to the next proper committee of the whole budget. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your honor, make a motion to remove Command Car 60 from the capital budget.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to remove Command Car 60. Any discussion?
In the paperwork, it looks like it would be saved if we would do this as a take-home squad, is that correct?
Yeah, so I didn't, that would be something for probably PNF, I think, if we were to look at take-home vehicle for that. It's currently not used as such. That has not been allowed at this point, but...
But if we would buy a new car and keep it, that's the proposed use for it, we wouldn't get rid of it?
It really would come down to a PNF decision as to how it could be utilized.
You'd have to look at who lives in the city, who's going to, you know, designate a battalion chief to be on call or it's a long kick down the road thing.
Yeah, but for, like I said, for what it's worth, previously, I worked at City of Wausau, their chief, assistant chief, they have take-home vehicles. So, it is a common practice in other places, but definitely would be a discussion for another meeting.
We're not throwing it away if we go and we replace it. Because then we have to, if we do, when we do replace that or whatever vehicle, then that goes back to PNF to decide how to get rid of it, so...
Okay. I have a motion and a second to remove Command Car 60. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to pull the library carpeting out of the budget.
Go up a little bit, I want to...
Oh, you have some other things you want to pull?
Can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
What's up?
Go ahead and use it. We won't talk much about you.
I just wanted to highlight page 63 of your packet. I put all of the projects in priority order by department, so that's off the right hand on the front one. So I think that that will help aid the discussion if we want to, instead of taking them piece by piece, sort of take a look at what's critical versus what's high or lower priorities and sort of frame our discussion that way, it might help.
I only have 41 pages. My iPad died about a half hour ago.
Did you not charge it?
No. I mean, this is kind of the way we always did things in the past. Some department managers said, oh my gosh, this is a high priority and in reality, when we just had the carpeting discussion, it isn't that much of a...
Thank you.
...high priority. And then there's some things that in the past too, we've...
Are there ones you want to talk about that aren't critical, that you want to remove the rating from?
I have my list. I don't want to show my hand because I don't want to influence other people's votes before we discuss it without altering last.
Okay.
But in the past too, we've had, you know, I would like X amount for replacement of the chairs, the council chambers, and instead of 10, we did five and then came back and did five the next year. And that's not unusual for us during this process to whittle these down a little bit and kind of give the, the department had the idea, we want to do this in phases. So I guess this is the way we always did it and this is brand new to you, so I'm sorry for kind of jumping on.
Let's still get to the end of the list, one way or the other.
Yes.
Okay, so we were on the library carpet from...
Yes, I'm making a motion to just remove it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to remove the library carpet. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, sorry Emily, now if they want to go with the list.
I'll make a motion to remove the voice gateways.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to remove the voice gateways for 42-5. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to remove the Streeter Square basketball court from the, just do away with it.
I'll second.
Hold on, let me get to that page.
With that motion, can you incorporate a price in to remove it? I mean, if we save $5,000 to remove it...
Not 45,000.
No, if we remove, yeah, if we remove it for $5,000 removal, I know it would be less than that, but have a number on there for removal?
Dustin, you got a figure, you think?
All right, then we'll do.
By the time we restore it into grass and...
All right, that sounds reasonable, 5,000 to remove the basketball court completely from Streeter Square.
I'll second the motion.
Gus already did.
Oh, all right. I'm just making...
I have a motion and a second to remove the basketball court at Streeter Square for 45,000, but to put in 5,000 for the removal and black dirt and seed. Any discussion?
Actually, I'm the opposite. I think we need to go finally. There's not enough for the kids to do in town. Yes, there's a basketball court just five blocks away down, mainly for the West Side kids. I think if we're going to do it, let's do it, do it right and add lights to it, light it up. I think we need every bit we can to get these kids out playing, moving, so, no, I think we need to keep it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to remove the Streeter Square basketball court and remove the 45,000 and to add 5,000 for the removal of it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Committee roll call?
Roll call.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
No.
Mr. Rick?
Aye.
Mr. Waits?
No.
Ms. Rikowski?
No.
Mayor Haas?
Aye.
Six to three to remove.
Six to three to remove. Moving on.
I'll make a motion to reduce the replacement pumps for the Aquatic Center from 35 to 10.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to reduce the feature pumps at the Aquatic Center. Replacement of the feature pumps at the Aquatic Center to 10,000. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
It was all no.
Bob and Mark.
I'll make a motion for the park entrance signs, if the clerk is ready.
Hold on, I got to find him, okay.
Park entrance signs from 35 to 15.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to reduce the park entrance signs from 35 to 15,000. Any discussion?
Could we stipulate that City Hall gets one of the signs?
It's not a park sign.
That's not a park sign.
You could ask them to bring it back and add it in the budget somewhere else.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, who did no?
I did.
Just one, okay.
I did also, Laurie.
Oh, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to replace the shelter aprons, just one per year, so whatever would be a reasonable cost for that. What was it? That's twenty-five thousand. Can we reduce that to, you had three? Was that for three shelters, Dan?
Yes.
Can we?
Yes.
So can we reduce that to do one a year instead?
Twelve, twelve, get you?
Eight.
Eight grand?
Let's go nine.
Go nine.
Nine, nine, nine it is.
For nine thousand, reduce it to nine thousand.
So your motion is to reduce the twenty-five thousand to nine thousand?
Yes, to do one park shelter per year aprons.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to reduce the park shelter concrete work from twenty-five thousand to nine thousand. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I'm not sure what Alvin and Rick voted on that.
Mike, what did you vote?
I voted no.
You voted on that, too, okay. So six to two.
I'll make a motion to reduce-
Hold on, hold on. Or seven to two. You guys need to sit up here and see how difficult this is. Okay.
No, I'm good.
Onward.
I make a motion to reduce the Smith Center rental skate replacement schedule from ten thousand hours to twenty-five hundred dollars.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion to reduce the Smith Center's rental skates from ten thousand to twenty-five hundred. Any discussion?
How many skates will that replace?
About twenty-five?
With borrowing, normal capital items or anything over five thousand dollars, but if you guys want to go under that, it might be something that we look into, putting it into operations, anything under five thousand. Not a strict policy, but it's something that we should try to consider if it's under five thousand dollars to tackle it in operating.
I will, I will amend my motion to reduce it from ten to five.
That's the second. Okay with that.
I'll accept, yeah. I just think the thought process of doing the twenty-five, obviously, is to tackle it, you know, at a reasonable rate, and then once you hit that four-year mark of replacing all of them, then you can possibly look at just continuing that from there on out, and, because skates, just being someone that played hockey myself, they, you need to replace them a lot, you know, fairly often, depending on the usage of them, so depending on the usage we get out of these.
So we have a motion and a second to reduce the skate rentals at the Smith Center from ten thousand to five thousand. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mike correctly voted no.
Okay.
Anything further?
Make a motion to remove the park shelter keypad lock.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to remove the park shelter keypad locks for ten thousand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing none, we'll establish a date and time of next meeting.
I should have brought my calendar.
Brad and I and Emily will probably sit down and have a discussion about the-
Okay, to be determined.
Great.
Okay.
We do have a council meeting on the eighth of October. In the week of the twenty-first, we have our normal, no, we moved that to the following week, didn't we, as far as the normal round?
Yeah, we moved them all to the end of the month.
Yeah. If there's a date in the week of the fourteenth that would work for the next round, please forward that to the mayor, and he can convey that message to myself and Emily. That would be-
The week of October fourteenth.
Unless you guys want to go sooner, but we'll get council meeting on the eighth. Emily, do you have timeframe that you're looking for?
No, I'll follow you.
Okay.
Monday nights are preferential for people, possibly the fourteenth.
Yep.
You guys look, board of review.
Yes, board of review.
It's board of review.
Board of reviews on the fourteenth.
It's from four to six.
Four to six. We can spend here all, we'll be here all day long, so why not at another meeting?
You want to do it Tuesday instead?
Well, those of us that'll be here a little-
The fifteenth?
Enjoy each other's company longer.
Fourteenth is-
Fourteenth.
I think fourteen works just fine.
Whatever, that's fine. So then it'd be six, six-thirty?
Yep, six-thirty.
So we can-
Whatever the pleasure is.
Monday, six-thirty.
Monday, six-thirty, October fourteenth.
I have one more question. With the, I know- Well, the elevator repair is priority at the, at the library, but I know their budget there is very healthy. Why is, why are we paying for this?
It is-
This is a building essential. I mean, we, we supply the building essentials. They supply the, say, bookshelves and amenities. I think they just paid thirty-five thousand dollars for a book, book racking system for the children's wing.
Yep.
They pay for the above and beyond. The elevator is kind of a nuts and bolts.
We own the building.
Okay. And essentially, they did already pay for it. We're just paying them back for it.
That's the total price, that's what she wants.
All right, if there's nothing further, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submoved.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.